The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Hello, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Town Council meeting, Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. And we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a stink bug.
Looks like a needle.
It's a stink bug.
Roll call.
Counselor Campanelli.
Actually, she is probably going to be late. She told him so. Hopefully she'll be soon.
Thank you. Counselor Evans?
Here.
Mayor Kucinski?
Here.
Counselor Luddy?
Here.
Counselor Tinessa?
Here.
Counselor Rosso?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
All right, thank you. First up is our audience of citizens. If we have anyone that wishes to speak at our audience of citizens, now would be the time. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Tim Oakes, Belcher Hall, 31 Belcher Hall Road here in Berlin.
You're welcome.
Thank you. To start, I come representing the Board of Education and would like to just kind of bounce some things through you to verify that the way we're doing things is appropriate. I believe it is, as we're following state statute. First off is our schedule of meetings for the year. By statute, those are supposed to be published by January 31st of the calendar year. We typically publish in November at our annual meeting for the coming year. So, meetings throughout the course of this year, as it relates to our regular meetings, have been publicly available since probably about November 28th of last year. Secondly, there have been some allegations recently concerning secret meetings on our behalf. It's my understanding that statute dictates that we notice our meetings at least 24 hours in advance of when we intend to have those meetings. In particular, the specific meeting of the 26th was noticed with the Clerk's office on the 22nd of September, which we felt was ample time per statute to notice this to the public. Relevant to that, and in a follow-up to Mr. Evans' comment from a couple of weeks ago, I would agree that there may be some confusion at the school website level in terms of some schools choosing to post the meeting as well as the district. I think the rationale behind that is that there are some people who are focused on the school where they have an interest in. So if it's a middle school kid, they're looking at the middle school website and perhaps no place else. So that's the middle school's opportunity or attempt to advise that group of population which may never look at the district or the high school or the elementary school sites. I will concede it's not consistent, and I probably will chat with our webmasters about that, but I don't know that there's a solution to improve. If we were to put it on all of the websites plus the district, then we'd have the Wolves and the Huskies and the Spartans and the Redcoats and the Apples showing up on the website, which could possibly make it more confusing. Moving on, the discussion of the lack of information concerning how monies are allocated and spent, in particular, perhaps legal expenditures. Every year, we have a handful of public meetings, starting in January, going through February, and sometimes into March, April, and May, depending on the year. In 2014, we were able to finalize our budget in February. In 2015, due to some changes, it was a May timeframe, and in 2016, we were able to finalize our budget in February. Again, all of these meetings were public. We had some meetings with the Town Council Finance Committee, which I know were all in public as well. And, you know, those are the times that we have, it's my understanding as a member of the community, stepping aside from the Board of Ed for a minute, to talk about where we're spending our money as a community, what we're spending it on, and if people have questions, that's when those questions are to be raised. So that's kind of my understanding as to the process. And I admit, I've only been doing this job for a little bit less than a year as chairman at the Board of Ed, so, you know, I'd like to think what I'm doing is right and appropriate and in the best interests of the town as a whole. But if there is anything there that anybody has, anything that we could maybe talk about, I'd be happy to talk at another time. I certainly don't want to get in the way of this meeting beyond the audience of citizens. Moving on to another issue, there was a comment that I took from last meeting's audience of citizens where it was said that it could be hearsay, that I, me personally, as the chair, had said I'd rather protect someone who's done good in town and had represented the Board of Education. To me, that borders more on slander than hearsay, as that was not a statement that was made at any point in time. Quite the opposite, I am all for taking care of people who are doing good for the town when they're doing the right thing. If they're doing something inappropriate or not consistent with how we're looking to conduct business, then those people should be held accountable for that. Now, that's my opinion, but that's all probably that matters right now. I guess, stepping aside from the Board of Education for a minute and just talking about a general member, as a general member of the public, my takeaway from the meeting a couple of weeks ago, that a single member of the public could generate such concern and call to action by the Town Council is a little concerning. I don't consider that to be good governance overall. And I ask, are we all perfect? Have we ever not made a mistake in our life? And I think for everybody here, there, everywhere, the answer's no. We're all fallible. There's no way that we're perfect. As an example, the Board of Education has the graduation, right? We will be discussing next week in a committee meeting to start, which is open to the public, as it always is, and our regular meeting to follow, which is also open to the public, that topic. We certainly received a lot of response from people in the community, and it is a matter that we are taking under consideration and discussing. And we are not going to hide behind closed doors and secretly talk about it. We are going to do it in public. And decisions may or may not come, as we said last week at our Board of Ed meeting. So, in closing, I too challenge you to step up, as you were challenged a couple of weeks ago, and govern for the voice of the public at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience of citizens? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing of our meeting. The only thing, Tim, I will say is, I don't remember the Town Council calling anybody to action. I remember, at least I can only remember what I said. I just said, "Got to go to the Board of Ed." That's what I remember in response to some comments in our meeting, that it's not out of our purview.
Right, understood. You were called to action by the audience of citizens.
Oh, okay. But I don't, we didn't take any action.
Understood.
Yeah, okay. It sounded like you were called to action, but I think we said, "Go to the Board of Ed," which apparently they did, which is where they should be, right?
We'd be welcome to have you guys, too. Next Monday.
Yeah, all right. I'd love to go. Just too many meetings, too many meetings. Thank you, though. Thank you for that. All right. So, all set with that. We will go to our meeting agenda, start with our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the four items on the consent agenda as written.
Second on those?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. All right, so agenda number one.
Mayor, I just wanted to make, I think it was clear, I just wanted to point out, I think in agenda item number four, it said the VFW field. I think that's Veterans Field for the location of the tree lighting ceremony.
Oh, yeah.
The application indicates Veterans Park, and I think the summary of the agenda says VFW field. My apologies for not mentioning that earlier.
Correct that for the tree lighting.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Number one.
This is the funding for the elevator, the last bit of funding that is necessary to achieve the necessary match for the funding for the elevator for the library. What happened last time this was on was there was a State Bond Commission meeting that was scheduled for September 30th, where we thought the item would be voted on favorably, and we would be all set. So, at that point, we didn't take any action. I believe that the item just was left alone. At this point, the State Bond Commission did not take it up either way on the September 30th, and they have calendared it for the October 28th. Seeing that it is as close to the deadline as that is, Helen Malinkin and myself felt that it might behoove us to ask the council to provide a safety net if the State Bond Commission should either not act on it or act unfavorably on it, that then we would turn to the contingency, which wouldn't be our first choice for the remainder of the funds that are necessary. Helen has spoken with our state representative, Arisimwitz, and he has suggested that she also write a letter requesting an extension of the timeline necessary by November 1st, which she has done, just in case that there's some snag. But we felt that it would be in the town's best interest if we were to at least have the cushion provided if council saw fit to fund it in this way. Hopefully, it won't come to pass, and we could still use the State Bond Commission's vote on October 28th or whenever they should have it.
Okay. Yeah, I think, well, I think, yeah, that's fine. I think we already offered that to Helen, as I recall, last time, right? So, take a motion on this?
Sure. Move to transfer an amount not to exceed $9,675 from contingency to the transfer to special grants fund to secure the match for the State Library construction grant for the construction of an elevator in the Berlin Peck Library Community Center building.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Mrs. McDeer, can you just confirm for me, if the bond goes through, and we will return this money to contingency?
We'll never use it. The funding just has to be in place by November 1st or shortly thereafter if there is an extension, but we would never touch it because we won't be needing this anyway, probably until next spring as it is, but we would never disturb the contingency at all then in that matter.
Okay. If the bond doesn't go through, where have we used contingents, anything out of contingency at all?
Yes, there is the, oh, I'm sorry, there is the budget change form.
I don't see a, oh, this isn't the usual form. I apologize, because usually we have the other form that says how much. What's remaining?
I don't believe that we've used contingency at all yet.
Okay.
So, there's still the entire, yeah, that's the wrong form attached to it.
No, pardon me. Sorry.
Yeah, usually there's a balance, and, yeah, they didn't put it in. But I don't believe, this being September or October, whatever month this is.
October.
Yes, we have not used it yet.
Okay, good. Yes, Dave.
Along the lines of what Ms. Rossett indicated, it does indicate we transfer to special grants. Would we then need to formally transfer back out of special grants?
We could do that if the, yeah.
If we don't use it?
That would probably be the appropriate way.
Okay.
Okay.
And may be done in the June, July timeframe when we do all those things.
Give it some time. Let's not get too anxious about moving it back. I just don't want to forget about it, but, yeah, same thoughts you had, you know.
I'm sure Helen won't forget about it.
Let's not get it stuck there.
Well, and if it wasn't used in, well, no, that's true, the grant account wouldn't flow into the, yes.
It should move back.
So it goes into the, yep.
But we can maybe even put that on consent, once we know if the State Bond has taken control of it.
Yeah, later in the spring.
Good.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm in favor of this. Of course, I'd like to get the grant money for the town, but is any, how did we come up with this $300,000 number for an elevator? Is that a realistic amount? Can the project be done for that? And is there a place for it in the building?
Yes.
I know there's a place, but I remember hearing that.
Doug Solick had had Jakunski &amp; Humes give us an estimate as far as their pricing because they had done the original plans for the library. There is a shaft in the building. The question is, and what we're going to be discussing as time goes on, is exactly what kind of access the elevator would be, whether it comes directly from the outside or whether you'd have to go in through the community center to access the...
I know we need it for, especially for handicapped accessible.
Yes.
I was just curious, are we going to put another $200,000 to make the deal work or something? But they think this is a pretty realistic budget.
For the elevator, yes. The things that aren't included, perhaps, though, that might be necessary so that everyone's at least aware, is that the parking might become a little bit problematic in that area if you have many more people, handicapped or otherwise, parking there to use the elevator. There is very limited parking right there, so there may be an additional expense that might be needed for something along the lines of parking. Also, there is going to be some disruption or damage, whatever you want to call it, depending on who you speak to, regarding some of the rooms. If it goes in one place, room number four in the community center will almost be lost completely. If you go the other way, you may be able to put in a hallway from the outside, which may avoid that, but you will have some expense to fix even upstairs, because where the elevator will go, the shaft may be there, the elevator may cost so much, but there may be additional expenses. But those we hope to cover with the $300,000, or be able to do the work with our own forces.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? We good? Okay, motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. So moved. One way or the other, Helen, you're getting that elevator, right? Number two. Denise?
Yes. As you know, the Town of Berlin is responsible for maintaining both the railroad pond and paper goods pond dams as per the Connecticut Safety Regulations. The Kensington Dam, also known as the Railroad Pond Dam, located south of Burke Street, is in need of some repairs structurally and otherwise. Several years ago, the Public Works Department had solicited proposals for on-call consultants to perform some inspections and to develop some strategies as to how to deal with the dams. Since Mr. Healy has been on board, he has also looked at the dam in terms of whether or not it's worth, what would be the better way to proceed, whether it's worth to repair and continue to maintain it or to completely remove it. So, those are some things that need to be developed as time goes on. Machi Engineers LLC has submitted a proposal of $26,200. They've been selected to do the work with an additional 10% contingency, which would increase the cost to $28,820. There is funding available through the Flood Control Projects account and the Drainage account. And Jack is here to discuss it.
Jack, you just, one second. So, I know you've talked about this before, so, right? We're just going to, we got to know which way to go, right? Just trying to figure out what the best way to go is with this, to fix it, remove it.
Yeah, what we did, we went out, we asked three consultants to give us proposals on how to perform an evaluation on the dam, and then, at the end of this, we'll make a presentation to the council and give you a recommendation, which we think is, you know, the better way to go.
Okay, great.
There's a process in the state regulations that allow you to remove dams. They're encouraging people to remove dams. One of the things, though, you have to determine is the historic significance of the dam, and that'll be part of this evaluation.
Oh, okay. And from what I remember, you're telling us, both options are expensive, from what I remember. I do remember that.
There's no cheap way out of this.
Yeah, I got it, okay, whatever.
My thought is that, one of them, though, ends the responsibility.
Right, you did say that.
Ends your cost.
Right.
But I understand there's probably, there may be some public desire to keep the dam, so that has to be part of the evaluation.
I mean, if you eliminate that dam, that pond is gone, right? There'll just be a stream through there, right? Yeah. Continuing from the other upstream, yeah.
Yeah, they opened the dam about 30 years ago, 35 years ago, and there was a little stream that goes.
There's a stream that goes through the middle, I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah, the stream would probably match with, there's the stream that goes under the Kensington Road.
Right.
So, that would all be there, you'd have, you know, an open area, then probably, you know, we'd have to decide what happens to the property.
Oh, we could reclaim some land, much like the Dutch do, so that's great. So, that's great. I like that.
No windmill, though.
Yeah. Good, all right. No, that's good, yeah. Thanks. Okay, do we have a motion on this?
Sure. Move to authorize the Town Manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Machi Engineers LLC in the amount of $26,200 to provide the statutory required inspection and reporting of the Kensington Dam, and authorize the Town Manager to execute change orders as required to complete the project in an amount not to exceed $28,820.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. So moved. Okay, number three.
Okay. This is the last item, and I don't see Mr. Bajorzki here.
No, he couldn't, I talked to him, he couldn't make it.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, you came in his stead. Thank you for coming. I asked him to have someone here. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. This is the same item.
He was working, I think. Same item.
Same item.
Same item. How you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. You know, I know we've had some, which is a good thing, since the last meeting, we had a lot, we had some discussion. I know Attorney Donofrio talked to the consultant, and so it was all good, from what I understood. But Attorney Donofrio, could you just kind of summarize, or in detail, whatever you think, so we, the council and every housing authority, everybody understands where we may be at here?
Sure. Where we left off two weeks ago was a concern by the council and by the housing authority as to expenses associated with the potential carve-out of the four acres subject to the conservation easement. I spoke with the housing authority's financial consultant, Ellen Flanagan, last Thursday, October 13th. The bottom line is that the significant expense that the housing authority is facing really doesn't have anything to do with the town wanting to carve out four acres, but rather has everything to do with a policy shift in Connecticut from 2015 to 2016. In other words, the state is no longer funding senior housing, and as a result, the low-income housing tax credit market is very competitive. In order for this project, which is definitely feasible and definitely viable under the guidelines, in order for this project to be competitive, at least 50% of the units have to be two bedrooms.
Correct.
Currently, as designed, 16 of the units are two bedrooms. So, they're looking at having the A&amp;E Architectural and Engineering Team do what amounts to a significant redesign in order to bring the number of two-bedroom units up to 26. So, Ellen agreed with me that the funder really doesn't care about the carve-out of the four acres. She agreed that no traffic study is necessary, and that the updating of items like an appraisal and environmental assessment would be required due to timing, regardless of the carve-out, and represent minimum expenses. She told me that the A&amp;E team is reviewing the project without the four acres at issue to determine what local land use approvals will be necessary. And from my perspective, it really comes down to whether or not our regulatory agencies, specifically planning and zoning and inland wetlands, want to review the project due to the significant increase in the number of two-bedroom units. Okay? But the process that, the real expense is on the architectural and engineering redesign work. That's the significant expense, and that obviously is due to redesigning the project to have an additional 10 two-bedroom units rather than anything to do with the four-acre carve-out. And of course, the delay in the conveyance that was necessitated by the discovery of the conservation easement last summer and the need to get a release of that from the state is what pushed the project into 2016 and in the current funding environment.
That is correct about the two-bedroom process. However, I did not speak with Ellen, but I do have some figures here, and there is an updated traffic study, though she said we would not need that.
She told me she would, we would not need it.
Okay. I was not, you know, she didn't tell me any of the things that you spoke about, but what I have for a total that the town would be responsible for, and this is per our meeting last week, you know, with the architects and the engineer and the Women's Institute, that it could be a total of $75,000. With the loss of that four acres, like you said, you know, now it would have to be low-income housing, but with the loss of that, we lose our standing as far as competing for grants. And at the time of the eight acres appraisal, it was appraised at $240,000 at that time, which could be anywhere from two to four years ago. So, by cutting that four acres, the town would, in some way, owe us $120,000. Now, I believe Mr. Bajorzki sent you an email, Mayor?
I didn't see the email, but we did speak about that.
There are seven, there are a few things here to replace that shortage. Now, like I said, with that shortage, we would lose seven to nine points in state funding, you know, in, to be in competition for state funding. We would go down the ladder. He had, you know, through our discussions with our consultants, you know, we have, you as a town could do a tax abatement, pilot agreement, let's see, the town would then award the Berlin Housing Authority a CDBG or steep grant in the amount of the shortage. The town with, working with us in transportation, would establish a bus route. In other words, we need something to replenish that loss of the 120, but we also need to get a reappraisal now, apparently, of that property.
Right.
It could be more, who knows? Could be...
Well, I mean, I guess my contention to Mr. Bajorzki was, though, whenever that rewrite, whenever that appraisal was done, we assumed that that extra four acres was a buildable piece of property, not knowing about the conservation easement.
Right.
So, I mean, I would, and I did tell him this, I said I would disagree, I'm not an appraiser, and we need to get another appraisal. I wouldn't really see how that would cut half the value off the property if now it's a, what we've all kind of agreed to is perhaps a useless piece of land. I don't know how much that would fit into the appraisal.
Well, at the time, it was appraised at $240,000.
That's right. I agree with you, yeah, no. At the time, we didn't know, so I'm with you.
But, no.
So, I mean, we do have some more homework to do. I agree with you, no doubt about it.
Well, apparently, what Mr. Bajorzki would like to see done, I know you want to do a year extension, apparently we need that, but we would like the Town Council to agree to the seven requirements. If you'd like me to read them, I can.
Now, that, those requirements were not in the discussion with Attorney Donofrio? Does that ring a bell?
No, the very specific question that I asked, in addition to what I just articulated, is whether or not the funder would care about the carve-out of the four acres at issue. And the response from Ms. Flanagan was no. The issue is the delay of the project pushing it into a different policy environment where they now have to have an architect and an engineer add 10 two-bedroom, convert 10 previously one-bedroom units to two-bedroom units. That's the significant expense. The appraisal would have to be updated regardless because of the age and the need to have an appraisal within a certain number of months prior to the financing.
Sure, right.
So, that was the specific conversation that I had with her last Thursday.
And you guys had a meeting, and these seven...
Last week. Last week, right, and, you know, and they said, I mean, this is, of course, she told the attorney that, okay, we don't need a updated traffic study, however-
I think she talked, and she talked to the attorney after the meeting, right? I think you had your meeting-
She talked to me last Thursday afternoon.
Thursday, right.
And your meeting was Wednesday?
Wednesday.
So I'm curious where the seven things came up.
Well, this, this is what, this is what I have, it says, these are the minimum requirements we need.
Okay.
Okay, for the project to move forward with financing. So the first one, new acreage to be entire, new acreage of the Knights of Columbus parcel along with a portion of the .2 acre parcel, which there's a triangular parcel added to the site for stormwater sewer pipe.
Right.
Okay, so everybody knows about that, that's good. That's not under the easement.
Okay, right.
So we need a modification of the approved site plan, you know, by the town.
We know that, we know that, yeah.
Okay, so you know that.
Right, yeah.
Term of option to be two years, if you want one year, then you must affirm conclusion of zoning, inland wetlands, zoning of the Board of Appeals, no later than January 15th, 2017, because we can apply for money, you know, for February 1st. Town of Berlin to cover Berlin Housing Authority costs relating to modifications of the site plan and representation at hearings by the Berlin Housing Authority Development Team. Town of Berlin to cover costs relating to the modification, updating or revising site plan, survey, environmental survey, well, now not the traffic study, market study, appraisal, and any financial documents already prepared for submission to finance sources based on, you know, the original eight-acre site. And then what Joe has here, the total of three and four shall not exceed 75,000, and any actual amount spent by the town will be credited towards the 120,000 shortage created in the town's contribution by removing those four acres, so-
Yeah.
That would be part of that.
Right.
And then he has, like I said, the town will work with us to replace the 120,000 shortage, any funds the town expensed to cover the cost of reducing the approved site would be credited towards the town's contribution, the pilot agreement, tax abatement, which mirrors the current pilot agreements on Percival Heights and Marjory Moore would be credited, a payment, well, this is what he wrote, a payment of up to 120,000 towards the project, the actual number will be based upon an updated appraisal, and then, like I said, the town applying for and hopefully successfully receiving, you know, a steep grant or CDBG in the amount of the shortage, and then, like I said, the transportation, I know, it's a long list, I know.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
But we'd like to get this process rolling, so-
Absolutely, I'm with you. The thing is, I mean, it seems like, I mean, and again, I'm not, you know, I mean, you're standing there, Joe's not, but Joe and I spoke, it seems like every time, I think, you know, we had kind of reached the same page, it seems like the next day, there's a new page.
Well, the thing is-
So it's a little frustrating, you know, to get a handle on it, and, you know, I had, and, and again, I know you're, and I don't mean, you know, Joe and I will talk
I know, you go back and forth.
We talk a lot, you know, Joe and I will talk a lot more, but, you know, I mean, the figures he's coming up with, like I say, the 120,000 on that four-acre piece that we're cutting off, I would certainly dispute that, I mean, I don't, I don't know where that would even come from, we've got to get a new appraisal, right?
Right, right, which I firmly agree with that.
Yeah, so-
We've got a new appraisal.
Right.
But, you know, the cost for the architects to revamp-
Right, but the cost to revamp the building, as we just heard, is due to the change in the environment, that has nothing to do with the town, that's the state and whatever financing you're looking for.
Apparently, we have, we don't have finances for that, we don't, we weren't able to apply for grants because of this constant extension and, you know, the problem, the existing problems, so-
It seems to get more complicated, even though we're trying to figure it out, I know, we're all working hard to figure, we'll figure it out, we'll get there.
Well, the thing is, apparently, the total would be 75,000, but we can deduct that traffic study of 3,100.
Yeah.
So that would be 72,000.
Okay, all right.
I mean, apparent, you know, we don't have any more money to expend on redesigning for two-bedroom units at this time, because we missed the grants and things.
Right.
So that's why we're kind of putting this bill on the town, to help us go through.
Can I just ask the question, regardless of the additional four acres, would the housing authority have come to the town for the cost of, because it sounds like that would have had to occur anyway? So I guess my question is, is it the housing authority's contention that because of kind of the delay with the easement and everything, you would have been coming back to us for that cost regardless of how much land it was on?
Well, we spent, we spent all our monies, the grant monies that we got for the eight acres, we spent all that, so now with these changes, you know, now we incur these other costs, and we were not able to apply for other grants in due time, and I believe another one is coming up, oh, I don't know, somewhere in here.
And while you're looking for that, if I could just ask, and I, you may not have the answer-
I may not know.
With the modifications that are needed with the 10 additional two-bedroom units, I don't know if you talked about this at your last meeting, do you feel that that is going to fit in the footprint of the four acres, or is there going to be a concern that
No, our architects and our engineers said that it will fit.
Okay.
It will fit, however, it does change, you know, from senior housing, like the attorney said, but the thing is, we have no money to move on further to, we still owe our architects.
Right, but, but I think, I think-
And what we're looking for is money from the town, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, and I, and I get that, and we can figure that out, but, but I think, at least, at least if it's clear to everyone here, I think it might be that the need for the more money is not necessarily on you, it's not on the town, it's because this easement that came up, you know, out of nowhere, and, and we couldn't, we worked effort, you know, effortlessly with our state rep and with the town and everyone to remove it in the last six to eight months, year, I guess, really, almost now, it pushed us into a different, you know, funding environment, so, I mean, it just, it's just the circumstances where we find ourselves in, you know, I don't, I don't think it's anybody's, you know, the four acres cut off, I mean, none of this matters, it matters that the conservation easement could not be removed in a timely manner, for whatever reason, dealing with DEEP, that's the way I understand it, the council would-
I just, I just want to say a couple of things, if I could, just because this is a good discussion, but I want to make sure that it's complete. First of all, the notion that the appraised value of 240 gets cut in half, you have to remember that, I haven't seen the appraisal, okay? But every appraiser under the use paps has to have certain assumptions identified in the appraisal report, and one of the assumptions is that the property can be developed for the highest and best use determined by that appraiser, which by definition means legally permissible, physically possible. So if there was a value that was based on a belief that the property subject, the four acres subject to a conservation easement was buildable, then that appraisal is just wrong. Secondly, there seems to be, and I wasn't around until June 1 of this year as corporation counsel, but there seems to be this assumption that if the conservation easement had been discovered prior to, what I have in Attorney Weber's file indicates August 10, 2015, is when Cohen and Woof, the housing authority's attorneys, contacted Attorney Weber's office and said, here's our title search, we found this conservation easement. So there was no closing scheduled, and there was still quite a bit of work to go in order for this to close in the fourth quarter of 2015. Again, I'm not privy to all the details, I wasn't around in Berlin then, but the assumption, I think, that the housing authority is making, that but for the timing of the discovery of the conservation easement, there would have been a conveyance in 2015, and they would have been able to go to market before the policy environment changed.
And the record doesn't reflect that?
I don't, I don't have any facts that support that.
Okay.
Well, before that, we were going, we were going to closing, and that, from my understanding, we were going to closing, and then our lawyers found that conservation easement, now, and that property was, you know, deemed to us, the council at that time did not say that there was a conservation easement on it.
Nobody knew, yeah.
No.
Right, nobody knew.
Even after we had it surveyed and everything, we knew there was wetlands, you know, but then when we went to closing, that's when all this, you know, hit the proverbial fan.
But again, just, just to be fair, in Connecticut, it's the buyer that does the title search.
It should have been told to us from the town's lawyers, I feel, from the town lawyer at the time, which you were not here, but the town lawyer at the time, when that property, you know, was, said, okay, you can build, they should have told us-
Well, I don't think that it was known.
And I personally think my lawyer should have known.
It wasn't known until the title search, I think that, that's all to me.
Connecticut is always-
The buyer does the title search, because the buyer doesn't want to rely upon the party that's conveying the property to convey clean title, they have to buy the title policy, the title insurer.
Right, the buyer, like we do in our home, when we do in our home, we have to buy the title policy, right?
So I'm not, I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, I'm just saying, from a timing, from a timing perspective, I'm not, I'm not seeing that this definitely would have happened last year.
Right. Wasn't there some map we were waiting on too?
Yes.
Was the map never provided to the town, is that something I remember?
That was afterwards.
That was later, but that was needed for closing, obviously, correct?
It was needed to get, try to get a release of the easement.
Okay.
And I don't think the map was obtained till June or July of this year.
Of this year, okay, and the map was to come from who? The map would come from the housing authority? Okay, so, I mean, we are where we're at, but, yeah, go ahead.
I need to ask a question about the low-income housing piece of this, and Helen, I may need to have you come up. One, if it is low-income housing, is it still guaranteed senior housing? That's the first question, the second question is, does it go towards our quota?
Well, it's being packaged as senior housing.
So it still will be senior housing, it will just be considered low-income senior
Just a different financing mechanism.
And so does it go towards our low-income housing?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because that would, I mean, it would be good if it did, right?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, it's good anytime we could add units to get to that amount, but I don't think we're there yet, this is-
Well, we have ways to go, but that would, that would be adding.
Yeah, but you need a CO, and that's so far off, we can't even-
But I still think it's not bad to ask if, Helen, if you think it will be applied towards that, should everything go through, I mean, it could be years in the future, but just knowing it's on the horizon, what, 26 units, it's 26 more than we have right now.
It might even be 50.
50.
50, right.
50, yeah. Uh, yes, Helen?
It's an interesting question, because we have to monitor their covenants to make sure that they meet 8-30G in order for us to get the credits, so during this transaction, we have to look at their restrictions and, and who they lease to, and that it's for 30 years, and meets all the 8-30G requirements before we'll get credits. The interesting thing about your question is, is it guaranteed senior, well, it was approved under senior, but where, where the state is going with the two bedrooms is to not be for senior, so that is a very interesting question.
That was my concern, thought.
Yes.
I don't know who to ask this question, but you said you received grants, how much grant money did you receive initially, and how much, you know, you said you spent it all?
Well, we've spent, we've spent about 400,000. So, yeah. So now with this issue coming up, I mean, this, this is what I have here, the updated phase one would be 5,000, updated market study would be 5,200, omit the traffic study, updated appraisal 2,000. New soil testing of repositioned, maybe, I don't know, he's got a question mark here, 11,200, this was what, the information we got from Ellen Flanagan.
Okay.
Cost to modify survey, 5,000, cost to amend site plant, 5,000, legal review of changes, 5,000. WIHED, which is the Women's Institute, and DeMarco, our DeMarco management company, cost to review the modifications, 2,750, that would, I just have all these numbers, carrying cost of debt during year-long delay, 5,750 contingency to cover unforeseen changes, so 72,000 without that updated traffic study.
I feel like I'm buying a car here or something, no, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, uh, you know, so-
I'd like to buy one for that. But this is what it kind of broke up to, this is what Ellen said she was going to break it up to, and, that's what we need to move forward.
Yeah, no, I agree, no, we have to, I, Councilor, do you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question, and it was something I had asked before, and I think Mr. Luddy was getting at it, is, you know, how many, how much funds have been received, and where have they been expended, and what was the contingency in, in, in the budget? So I think presentation of that would be very helpful for the council, to see how you got to where you are, and then, you know, concise listing of what you think that is needed to get to the next step. I think we're hearing lots of different numbers, I'd like to have kind of a concise presentation on what has been expended and, and kind of a layout of budget versus expenditure today.
Okay. Yeah.
If we could kind of cut to the chase tonight, the action would be whether to extend the option or not, correct?
Yes, and on that point-
And as far as the town saying we're going to pay another 5,000, or 50,000, or 200,000, whatever it is, I think we need the information the other councilors are requesting.
Yes, I agree.
I think tonight we ought to extend the option and move the project forward, I don't want to hold it up, waiting for more data.
Well, my concern is, now we brought up a lot of other issues, we brought up this issue now of senior versus low-income housing, and how it was approved, and now how it might have changed, so there's, like, after tonight, there's a lot of different, there's more questions than perhaps less questions, although we did settle a few things, but-
So would you like our engineers and Ellen from Women's Institute to come to a meeting? What would you like?
I think we need to-
I would tell you, you know, we had the plans drawn, we had, it's, the property surveyed, there are other things, I can't remember off the top of my head, it's been like four years now.
No, that's, that's fine.
But would you like them to come to a meeting?
Well, I think what we probably need to do, I know we're up against this October deadline, I'm thinking if Attorney, Attorney DiNofrio might agree, Denise and the councilors here, perhaps we, you know, there's a lot of new information tonight, even after we had some kinds, conversations with the consultant and town attorney, perhaps we do a two-month extension till the end of the year, which would, you know, leave everything as it is for now, wouldn't affect anything, but we can, we kind of have to figure this out a little bit more now, and even if we were to continue, and, and, you know, after the two-month extension, give you the rest of the year, in the meantime, we perhaps could cut off this four-acre parcel and figure some of the expenses out, it would just give us some more time, obviously, some more, we would need some more zoning meetings anyway, planning and zoning meetings, and some more council meetings.
Would you like our engineers and our management company, and who would you like to, who would you like to meet with, all, all of them?
Probably down the road, I mean, I would start with, with Denise and the town attorney to do that, right?
I would suggest a meeting, not at the council, but between now and, you know, the next few weeks, to get everyone in the same room and, and discuss, because even if you were to just extend the option for a year, all of those other expenses still have to be done.
Right, right.
It sounds, you know, so, has nothing to do with whether you include the four acres or not.
Right, right, there's, there's a lot more question, so-
And the A&amp;E expenses aren't in that 72,000.
Correct.
And that's on-
And that's probably another 72,000.
And that's on them, and then- And that's on them, and they don't have the money for that.
Well, that's what the concern is, if they don't have the funds.
Right, correct. So, w, would you say that a two-month extension under the circumstances, so we don't lose, you know?
I think it's reasonable, you have to amend the agenda item.
Okay, so...
All right, so 60-day extension?
Yeah, and, and in the me, you know, we can have that meeting, again, and...
And then would you like to meet with the, our engineer, who would you want to meet with first?
Everybody?
Bring them all, bring them all.
Maybe everybody.
The engineer, the management company, and the Women's Institute.
Yes.
And you will be in touch with Joe as to what date?
Yes.
Would that be within two weeks?
We're gonna try...
The meeting, or...
A, a meeting with, or when? The sooner the better.
Yes, no, as soon as possible, yeah, no, absolutely, we're, we're trying to keep this thing going and get it done, it's, you know, I mean, we're all in the same boat here, so...
I'll be able to move in there.
Yeah. Councilor Campanelli may be moving in there by the time we're done with this, but she's got a long, she's got a long way to go, so, well... Yeah. We're, we're trying to not have that happen, that it's full by the time she needs to move in there, but, and Bill a long time ago, so, yeah, we, no, definitely, as, as fast as we can, we will try and get this done.
All right, so I'll, I'll talk to our team, and I will have Joe call Denise.
Or I'll call him in the morning.
Do you think, within the month?
As soon as everyone's available, well, as fast as possible.
Yeah, su, sooner than a month, I, I, I hope in a couple of weeks, at the, at the longest, yes.
We're getting a 60-day extension, and you would like to meet with our team.
Yes.
Okay.
So, is that, is that agreeable to everybody, does that make sense to everybody? Yes?
In, in the meantime, can we get a breakdown how $100,000 got spent on the design of this project for 50 units? I know, commercial project, that wouldn't work.
I'll, I'll have, well, these are the numbers that we've, you know, seen over the four years. So I'll have them give a breakdown of it, it's anywhere from 350 to 400,000.
Well, whatever it is.
Yes, I will get a, have them give you a breakdown of that, okay? Okay.
Okay, so we need to amend our...
Just, if you just did it to extend the option period to December 31, 2017, period, 16, 2016.
This is the 60-day extension.
Oh, that's right, 16, I apologize, yeah, period.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the option period to December 31, 2016, in our action item here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Okay, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay, motion carries. Okay, great, thanks a lot, so we got more homework to do on that. Yeah, everybody does, everybody has a lot, that's okay, we'll get, we'll get it done. We'll get it done, I'm sure. Okay. All right, so we're on appointments now, we have just a few, I still don't have a lot of applications, but that's okay. All right, so, we Board of Ethics, we had, this is all we had, Kate, right, up to this date, obviously?
Yes.
Yeah.
These are, as of now, the vacancies.
Okay, so, I don't see anyone, the first one I see, I guess, is Housing Authority, we have one spot on the Housing Authority, and two people. Okay. All right, so do we want to make a motion on this one, to fill that one slot on the Housing Authority?
Okay, I'll nominate John O'Brien.
I nominate, John, just, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And then, so are there any other nominations?
I nominate Don Geschmski.
Okay, great, thank you very much, so we have two nominations, so, roll call, vote on, I guess John O'Brien was the first one nominated, so, right?
When she does roll call, you just say who you're voting.
Yeah, okay, so...
Councilor Campanelli?
Don Geschmski?
Councilor Evans?
John O'Brien.
Councilor Luddy?
Uh, Mr. O'Brien.
Councilor Pinesa?
Mr. O'Brien.
Councilor Rochette?
Don Geschmski.
Councilor Russell?
Don Geschmski.
Mary Kuzinski?
John O'Brien. All right, thank you. And I, I will note, he's on, I, I believe he submitted a resignation to the park, Park and Rec, correct? Because I, I wouldn't do that other...
Yes, it was received in my office.
So you have it, I didn't see it in here, I meant to ask that before, I apologize.
And, um, so he, he's no longer on that commission.
Okay, so that'll leave the...
So now there's a vacancy there that maybe Don Geschmski can apply for.
Yeah, there we go, there we go, we can try that, we can try that.
I think we've got more than one vacancy for Mr. Geschmski to apply for.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll see what he wants to do.
I'm sorry, Park and Rec is not on there.
No, next, next time.
We're encouraging future service.
Next time. Well, we had some, we did have some discussion about Park and Rec, and we'll see, we can, Len and I a little bit about it, so, we will, we'll, we'll talk about that, and hopefully get that on the list. Okay, so the next one that I see names for is the Mattabasset, and I had held this for a while, because I was told by, I don't think it was John Dunham, but someone else, that there were some other people applying, so I really wanted to wait till, you know, if we had other names, but these two people, you know, are fine, I, I did talk to John Dunham about them. So we have two openings, we have two people, so, yes.
I just, can I, I did have a question about Mr. Argosy, he is no longer Chair of the Kensington Fire District, is that correct?
Oh, that's a good question, yeah.
We were going to find out, and find out if, if he was, if there was a conflict, I don't believe he is, but I don't know the answer to that.
I believe it's Mr. Pegliarulo.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It is, okay, great, thank you, good, I, yeah, we did have that question, yes.
I thought he had a former app that said former.
Okay.
Okay, okay, yeah. So, you know, rather than hold this up, we have two, we'll just, and, and I, I think, Mr., like I say, the chairman, Mr. Dunham was, I had run names by him, and I thought there was a couple other names coming, but they, they have not come, so...
Two for two spots.
I will take, yeah, I will take nominations.
Okay, for, I guess, we're in order here, I'll nominate Robert Argosy for first spot.
Okay, and do you want to just do the second spot, I mean, it's...
Can I please nominate Jimmy Fallon for the second spot?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
Apparently.
Is he coming? That's cool, I have, I hope he is. Okay, so, all those in favor of the nominations?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, okay. So that settles that, and now, what, what's next on the list here? P&amp;Z?
Yep.
Okay, P&amp;Z, there's a couple of people that are in, I'm, of course, as you know, P&amp;Z is always dear to my heart, I know, you know, you know that, and I, I really don't know either of these two people very well, and I, I just, it's a very, very important commission, so I would like to hold off on that, and I would like to, at a minimum, talk to these two gentlemen before we go further. I think there's, is there only one slot on?
There's one slot.
One slot, okay. So, huh?
I think I know both of those guys.
Okay, I mean, so I, I don't know them, I really don't, so I, I would like to talk to them, because it's, it's an important commission, and a lot of stuff happens there, and rather than just put a name on there that I don't, I'm not comfortable with, I don't know, you know, if anyone else is, but I, I don't like to do business that way, so if we could hold off on that one, I just want a little bit of time to talk to, to those two, and I, I thought there was actually going to be some others too, but, but, so we'll see, I mean, I, I just, you know, want to make sure, we fill it with the best person possible, for the interest of the town. All right, so we have, so we have a zoning board of appeals, we have one slot, I guess, is, right, for a regular slot, but that's just to fill that replacement for the, till the end of that term, which I guess is January 2017?
Yes, Mrs. Clark had resigned, so she has, so it's not a whole, in about five years, it's only for her.
That's just for that short time period, okay, so, I guess we can, and we have two for that, so let's go ahead and nominate, do we have just two?
Well, we have...
Is there three, is there a third one? Is there a third one?
There's two, but we, we, I think, we need to do them separately, because one is for an alternate position, and one is for...
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, we will, we will, yeah, absolutely. So let's do the, let's do the resigned position, the temporary position first, do we have a nomination on that?
I'll nominate Corey Whiteside.
Can...
Yes.
I realize we're nominating, can, we know of somebody who is willing to put in their application, do, could we hold off? Yeah, we thought that that person had, could we...
We've been holding off, and every time we seem to push it aside, so, you know, I mean, I, I've been waiting for applications too, and no one seems to come forward, I mean, I've been asking for months, actually, so I'm, I'm hesitant.
So we'll put up planning and zoning, but not this one?
Well, I mean, this one, this one here is for three months, so I, I figure, you know, we, we maybe try this individual, and in January, it's going to be up for renewal anyway, but that's kind of what I'm thinking, just to fill it for three months, and handle whatever they have to handle, if they're sure, I don't know if they are, and then we'll have, then we can maybe take more, that's what I'm thinking on that one.
Okay, that works.
Okay, so we have a nomination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Here we know other nominations, I'm sorry. Aye. All right, so he'll, he'll be filling that slot, and then we have, the next one is an alternate spot, I guess, correct? So if we have a nomination on the alternate spot?
Okay, I'll nominate Hunter Methina, I think I'm saying that correct?
Okay, any other nominations? Here we none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, okay, so moved. So, yeah, I, I would ask everybody on the council, everybody, you know, if they're interested, please get these in, because, you know, we wait, 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 and then we just don't end up filling things, so, that's all. Okay, thank you. Town manager's report.
I just have one reminder, if anyone hasn't gotten their flu shot, there is still an opportunity to get one tomorrow afternoon, from 1:00 to 2:30, the visiting nurses will be giving them at the library, Peck Library, so if you haven't gotten them, and you wish to get your flu shot, please do so.
Right, okay.
1:00 to 2:30, and you can walk in, all insurances are taken, if you don't have insurance, I think it's $20 or something.
At a flu shot, I get sick, so I tend not to get them, I don't know, huh, right?
I've never had one.
I had one, and I got sick, real sick, I said, forget it.
I thought it's actually not illness, it's your immune response to the flu shot.
Right, but it was horrible for several days, I said, yeah, I might as well have gotten the flu, I don't know.
That's it.
But I would suggest people get the flu shot, please, don't, don't go by my experience, I don't want to say that.
What it's worth, it doesn't impact, I guess, no.
Yes, that's right.
Someone cut his mic.
That's right, yeah, cut it off, yeah, please get the flu shot, all right, I'm advising everyone to get the flu shot. Special committee reports? Any special, what do we have?
The ordinance committee.
Oh, we had the ordinance committee, yes, we did have the ordinance committee, we talked a little bit about the, the leash, the ordinance, you know, we want to get, we want to gather some more information, we had some, one resident showed up, which was actually great, who had been involved in it in the past, so we got some information from her, and we're going to have another meeting in November, and look at some options for several different things in town, see if we could handle that issue, so that, that's coming up, and then we talked just briefly about the, the Blight ordinance, which we're not really changing the Blight ordinance, I think we agreed it's a good ordinance, and then we, we have one particular issue in town, one location that we're working on, the town attorney's help, his partner, and sister, so we're, we're working on that, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll work on that, huh? We'll work on that, and hopefully bring that to a successful conclusion for the town, and for the residents in the area that have been bothered by that for a while. So that's, that's special committee, any other?
We, we did have an audit committee meeting, it was mostly just a meet and greet, with a quick overview of our new auditors.
Okay, great.
What to expect this year.
Great.
If I could just back up a second, I think that this is the first meeting that we have had our new finance director attend, if you want to meet him in person.
Yes, yes, yes.
Kevin Delaney is here, I think some members of the audit committee have met him last week, but Kevin is here, and he's hit the ground running, and we look forward to many years with his assistance.
Welcome, good to see you. Yeah, I saw him the other day in the office, but, yeah, it's great to see you, glad you're here, let's look forward to working with you.
Welcome to Berlin.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
God bless you.
Uh, okay, any, no other committees, good? Dave, I know the historic district's always near and dear to your heart, I just wanted to give the opportunity, I know, you have a meeting, that's okay.
There's, Mayor, there's a beautiful building in town on Worthington Ridge, it's yellow in color, and it's needing renovation on the inside, and I'd love to support the friends of the Worthington Meeting House, and those that want to step forth with money, please talk to me.
What would a meeting be without the historic district, right? Report, okay, councilor's communications, what do we have? Yes, Rachel?
Just have one thing, I, I got my annual email today, so I know that there are signs about town saying to support your local police, so I do know that the Policeman's Ball is coming up, I believe November 19th, Officer Kanto was here a moment ago, and has since left, but I'm sure if you reached out to him, you could purchase a ticket, so if you want to support your local police, that's one way to do it.
Great, thanks, and, and that's good you said that, on, on that note, I had a discussion with a volunteer fireman the other day, and I think recent, this summer, or a couple of months ago, we got the letter to donate to our fire department, and it was interesting talking to him, he'd been a fireman for a long time in Berlin, and he still is, and, you know, he just, I was curious how many people contributed, and, you know, the percentage unfortunately is not as high as we would like, but they do appreciate whatever they can get, so just keep in mind, our police department and our fire department, you know, especially, I mean, the police department, you know, they're a paid department, but the volunteers, obviously, they protect us, obviously, and as a volunteer department, we all know, they save us one heck of a lot of money to not have a paid department in a town like ours, so we appreciate all their hard work, and putting their life on the line from the police and the fire department, so just keep them in mind as well. Any other councilor communications? None, okay, we'll move on, so we have the minutes of October 4th, motion to approve.
Okay, motion to accept the town council meeting minutes from Tuesday, October 4th, 2016.
Second on that?
Second.
Some favor?
Aye.
Upstate, one abstention, thank you, Peter, all right, we're all set on that. Thank you, so, so move, all right, now we have to move into our executive session, so we will have to close, make a motion.
Motion to go into executive session, pending litigations, strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims, or pending litigation for Farmington Avenue.
And we'll invite in, just...
Invited in is Attorney Donofrio, Denise McNair, the town manager, Chris Edge, and Jim Mahoney.
Okay, second?
Second.
Five-minute break.
All right, yes, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and, yeah, we'll take a, just a five-minute break to clear the room, and, yeah, thank you, or 10, five or 10. Thanks for coming, everybody.